Okay, I want to call for order the regularly scheduled meeting of the Unit School District Board. And before we start, I would like to introduce a new person sitting at the table. This is not a new board member, but it will be our new Board Secretary, Mrs. Terri Hines. So she is, will start in January, or in February, when Nancy retires.
Do you practice rounds?
That's right.
And Nancy, will you call roll? And welcome.
Mr. Bang.
Yes, here.
Mr. Beevers absent. Mrs. Dorff, here. Mr. Green. Mrs. James, here. Mrs. Miller absent. Mr. Runge.
Here. Next item of business is the pledge of allegiance, and Mrs. Hines, you get the pleasure of leading us.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Perfect. Okay, next order of business, we need to approve the agenda. Are there any changes or additions? And we need no changes or additions, we need a motion to approve. Second. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. We have the need to approve the consent agenda, which encompasses District 186 regular board meeting minutes dated November the 20th, 2018, Tri-County minutes dated November 14th of 2018, Tri-County bills for December 2018, applications and reports. And I will entertain a motion to approve.
So move.
I'll second.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Item number six is the approval of District 186 bills for December 2018. Are there any questions from the board?
I have a few.
Please let us know what page you are on.
Okay. Uh, just page one. There's something, it just says to be reimbursed. Seven hundred seventy-five.
I will have to check on that, uh, to see what that is. What exactly that is, but those are things that come through either for grants or from, um, sometimes travel, like for my Illinois Aspo travel, that comes through on our card, and then we turn around and the district doesn't actually pay. We get a reimbursement check for that.
Okay.
So, on those things, those are things that are never going to be expenses for us, on any of those things like that. Let's see. Specifically, I don't remember what that was. A couple, there's on page one and two, some Amazon Prime. Um, and I'm checking on that because we have, um, had an Amazon Business account that we just started using, and those showed up on my account, and I can't find any. So we're trying to work with American Express to see, can we get that offer to make sure that doesn't continue for the Prime? Because we've looked at, um, we had an Amazon Prime at one point in time that actually we were using my personal one at one, you know, for a long, long time. And that one is showing up now, and I'm not really sure why. So, but Steve and I, Steve got us with a business account, so we don't pay any taxes on anything. And we're trying to decide is it worth our while to pay? Cause I think a hundred and seventy...
Seventy-nine.
A hundred and seventy-nine dollars a year for so many users for that. We're not sure if that's worth it for the, cause we get everything within a couple of days anyway. Is it worth it, the hundred and seventy-nine dollars to have those emergencies?
Yeah.
So, um, so we're still trying to figure that out. Because most things that we're, that we're ordering, we have plenty of time to get in. But occasionally, there were some things with the play that we need to turn around really quickly. So, and I, it could have been associated with those charges for the play, because we needed things this week, kind of thing.
Page two, the return of unspent grant funds. That's the grant that we had for summer school?
Mm-hmm.
The summer that we did not spend all the funds on. We allocated a certain amount of money for materials to the library, and they didn't spend the money. And is it, um, any reason why we didn't spend all that great money when we had it, oh, you know, Tuesday?
Um, I think it was because it came in so late, and the library was a little bit unsure what they wanted to do and what they should do. So, they, they just spent very little money. So, we hope if we, we have that grant again this summer.
We are having the grant.
To have the time, because we didn't get it until April, so was trying to get summer school going, but that's, that's why. We had that allocated for, you know, we, we spent most of our salaries, we spent more than our transportation, but it came down to the money that we allocate to the library.
Okay, let's see. The high fall athletic workers, is that separate? Oh, sorry, page three. On page two, there's athletic officials, and I think there were a couple of different ones where I saw different, um, athletic, and I was just curious why, oh, page two, the first page, okay.
We, it's reimbursing the Athletic Impress Fund. So, um, Mr. Navara and now we have one at the middle school. Uh, Mr. Morrison can pay officials each time they have a game. And then we just reimburse the Athletic Impress account every time. It's a twenty-five-hundred-dollar fund, so every time they get to the point where they need it reimbursed, um, we are cutting a check to the Impress account to pay for those officials, because they want their checks every time they officiate.
Wouldn't, when it says athletic workers, would that be ticket takers?
Workers would be, that's not on that line, so.
It's on page three.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm, one, that question. Um, fall workers, ticket takers, announcers. So, so the rates that we approved at the beginning of the school year, the twenty-five dollars a game, that kind of thing, that's what, that's what those are for, for the whole football, volleyball, um, basically it, cause we don't do any other fall.
Do you make that in one lump payment to them, or is it?
Uh, that, that gets paid out of the, um, high school. The high school pays it out of their activity account.
Paying those people, just one check?
One time, they pay one time, and then we reimburse.
Okay.
That's why it's so large, then?
Yeah. It's for, um, for some of those, they're working football and volleyball, um, both, both of those seasons. We have quite a few people that do that. It's hard to find those workers. So, I know Mr. Navara is always sending out emails asking for people, so you end up with the same people working the gate, taking tickets, selling tickets at every game. So, like Rick said, though, this is just for the whole fall season.
Yes, okay.
Correct.
And then the playground, the stuff at General John A.
Yes.
That's the wood stuff that we talked about at the.
Those borders, mm-hmm.
Okay.
Is that all, are we, I mean, is that all we need to get to fix that? Do you know, Mr. Grody?
No.
There'll be more, will be?
There'll be more. We need to, um, ultimately do the draining, I mean, there's.
Well, I know, and I mean, right now, I think we were doing like a basic necessities.
Yeah, I believe the, the, um, they have fixed the equipment, um, but it needs to be replaced. But then they, they've taken out the wooden rails around there and then have added those, so yeah.
They've replaced them now, because they were just stacked up behind the building?
Right.
Or are they in the process of replacing them?
No, they've been installed, I believe.
Okay. Yeah, they did that a couple of weeks ago. Those were damaged or rotten timbers that they replaced with that.
The monitors on the bus, so page four, is that, are those expenses not included in our contract with them?
Um, we have extra monitors on certain routes. So the, what says extra monitor Ward Route, um, we have, our contract includes, I think, six monitors. And so, we kind of look at that on a case-by-case basis, you know, how many kids do you have? What's, how long's the route? How, what's the behavior like? And if they ask for another monitor, we will kind of negotiate that before we put those on. So there's only so many included in the contract.
And so then these are the additional.
And then there's, there's one for Ward, and then there's another, I'm looking to see if I see it right here. Um, there's a pre-K monitoring that has to do with, um, medical issues that one of our pre-K students had that required them to have someone on the bus with them.
Okay.
And that's not included in our contract either.
Told you I had a lot, sorry.
That's okay.
Okay, so on page.
Recovered mine too.
The page two, on the next, so there's the high school auditorium projector for twelve thousand, but then over here on page one, we have a high school auditorium screen for eight thousand three fifty-two. So these are, we've got projector on one, and then screen on another. So twenty thousand for that, then total?
The initial screen wasn't big enough. And so, that screen is being placed at Carruthers, so we need to buy a new screen. That's the one. And then projector, we did a deduct change order with Fager McGee for the projector, which was about eight hundred to a thousand dollars different between the deduct and what we ended up needing. Newer screen, bigger screen, needed a slightly larger projector.
Okay. Page three, on the next one, high school wrestling mat. Didn't we just buy one of those?
We did. We bought, uh, the big one. Uh, but then the practice mat, it was, got to be hard and problematic. So this isn't as expensive, it is nicer one, is the first one we bought, but it was a safety issue as well.
Okay.
So, um, the wrestling team actually kicked in, I think twelve hundred, eleven, twelve hundred dollars. We paid eight thousand, cause when I asked initially, what do you think you'll need? It was eight thousand, and then it cost a little bit more than what they anticipated. So they said, if you can get it for me, for us, we'll, you know, we'll use, raise the funds and kick that in.
Is that at the middle school? Do they have all their meats at the middle school?
Uh, yes, the mats are all at the middle school, but that's for high school and middle school.
There's no place at high school, or no?
It's moving the mats. So they, they wrestle in the, the girls, the girls gym, the smaller gym at the middle school. So you would have, have to move those mats, you know? There's really not a good place to store them and move those all the time. So that's where they, they keep them there, and it's just a lot easier to take care of that.
Page six, Mobi Max, is that the new card, that was the cards we just did? Is that what that was?
No. Mobi Max is, I don't know, have you remind me on that?
It's a online, uh, supplement, supplemental intervention, type two for, I think we did General Logan this one. So this was K two.
We have all, both elementaries and middle school using Mobi Max?
We have both elementaries in the middle school, so we now have, yeah, actually in high school as well, cause the licensing worked out to do all.
Murphysboro Chamber of Commerce, is there a reason why we're members of the Commerce Chamber?
We've always been a member of, um, supporting the community, a member of the chamber.
Okay. Safe deposit box.
Um, we have some records, microfiche, and files in one of the safe deposit boxes. Um, actually, that's one of the things I looked at, maybe we could look at, um, possibly emptying that and finding a new home for that at this point. It's just finding the time to get over there and get all that stuff out and finding a, a new home for that.
The replacement of the concrete steps, where were the, where?
Eight nineteen walnut, our old office.
Oh, okay.
Where the ROE.
Is renting that?
Yes. Those were in bad shape, that was, it's a tile that was on top of the, the cement steps, and that, that tile came off, and it was becoming a trip hazard.
Shell oil.
Um, those are, we have gas cards that all of our, uh, that go in the district vehicles. So that's for, um, transportation, teacher trips, and, um, athletics, sort of.
Like a credit card?
It is.
Okay.
And they get, they get checked out with the vans each time. Um, in each, in each one of the vans, a shell card and then a, uh, Motomark card. But we're looking to go to a card that they can use at any gas station. Um, it's a matter of just getting that paperwork in, because there's not always a shell when they travel. I think that's really all I have.
I only have one left.
She covered yours?
I saw the Fager McGee, we made another rather large payment, are we done?
We aren't yet. Um, we had our last pay progress meeting today, we have a punch list meeting tomorrow, where they're gonna go through the fine. I wanna say it's maybe four or five thousand, four or five hundred thousand dollars is balance that we're gonna, what we still owe.
And then did, okay, so we just paid them four hundred and twenty-two, so we owe them about another installment like that?
Right, I believe that's about right, you paid four and five hundred thousand dollars. And that won't be paid until the final, final punch list, um, till everyone agrees and everything's done before we, before we release that final payment. We just did the last, um, the elevator project, this is the, the final pay retainage on the, the forty-five-hundred retainage on the elevator, was the very last thing on that.
Where are we at on budget with the elevator then?
Um, I mean, we had some changes on that, but I, I can let you know what that total ended up being, over and above what we, what we initially projected, cause it wore some, definitely some additional costs to let that down.
Is it working well, Mr. Keener?
Yeah, they can do some back. About two weeks ago, there was some other adjustments. It's done.
I have a question about the, uh, Mickey Jackson grant, page eight on the end, or, so are we buying the things? And the grant is reimbursed in the district, I was.
Right, and I don't know if the Mickey Jackson, we have several of those grants, the foundation grants, we'll do the ordering, um, and then we get a reimbursement from foundation, but is me, is that one of the same grants, Mickey Jackson?
No, she's got her own through the Southern Illinois Community Foundation.
Okay.
By Fager's.
Okay. We have several of those little grants like that, that teachers write and get, um, and they'll do a purchase order, and we'll go ahead and pay for that.
Yeah, I saw the line, the winners that were.
Yeah, and they get reimbursement, reimbursement for that. Because a lot of times that comes in and, um, they do several purchase orders to get what they need, and, um, it's just a lot easier for, for them to write the District One reimbursement check. And Karen tracks all those, those things when we're waiting for those reimbursements, to make sure that we're getting all those things back.
Other questions from the board? Then I will entertain a motion to approve the District 186 bills.
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Nancy?
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorff?
Yes.
Mr. Beevers absent. Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mr. Bang?
Yes.
Mr. Runge?
Yes, motion carries. Uh, communications, do we have any?
I do, I have.
This was an email to, um, the district office. Um, I am requesting to begin maternity leave on March fourth, two thousand and nineteen. I will use eight weeks of sick time with the anticipated return to work on Monday, May sixth. I appreciate your consideration in this matter. Sincerely, Erin Allison.
Recommendation is to approve for maternity leave. If you have a recommendation, I'll accept a motion to approve that. Second?
Second.
All in favor? Opposed, motion carries.
Dear Mr. Grody and Board of Education, I am writing this letter in order to request maternity leave. I am requesting ten weeks, tentatively starting on January fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen, and tentatively ending April first, two thousand and nineteen. I plan to use six days for this leave. My due date is January twelfth. If I go over that due date, I hope to keep working until I am no longer able to do so, and then start my maternity leave after that. Thank you for your consideration, Kate Ripley.
Recommendation is to approve Mrs. Ripley's maternity leave as well? Now I'll entertain a motion to approve that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Dear Murphysboro CUSD 186 Administration and Board of Education, it is with mixed emotions that I submit my intent to retire. The last twenty-five years with Murphysboro CUSD 186 have been rewarding. I really appreciate the opportunity to retire under the IMRF Early Retirement incentive. My last day will be January fourth, two thousand and nineteen. I'd like to thank the administration and the board for making my time here so fulfilling. I would like to especially thank Steve Carrington for being such a great boss. He has always been supportive and fair to me. He allowed me to grow in my position, working with ISBE and student data reporting. His dedication to the success of the district and his work ethic has been an inspiration to me. I wish the school district much continued success in the future, and I plan to support education in Murphysboro as a caring member of the community. Again, thank you so much for the last twenty-five years. Sincerely, Joe Graef.
Recommendation is to approve Mrs. Graef's retirement, and wish her well. And I'll accept a motion to approve that. So move. Second? All in favor? Opposed, motion carries, and we wanna wish all three of those women all the best. Okay, moving to fishbowl items, and I assume since we have a fishbowl, we've got some items.
This is to Carla. I wanted to tell you how great last night was, and how everyone involved did such a wonderful job. It was well organized, and the children had such a good time. I know putting that on is a lot of work and requires everyone to work late. I just wanted you to know it was very much appreciated by me and all the parents and grandparents that were there last night. And this is, um, in regards to the holiday program, and it's from Karen. And then, this is dear Mr. Grody and Board of Education, it is with great pleasure that I announced that Melinda Pearson and Shelby Alfield were the two recipients of the Mickey Jackson Memorial Grants. The other rece- recipient was Kendra Bauer from Carruthers. The grant was open to all teachers and consisted of sending in ideas for items that teachers wanted for their classrooms. Nurse, Ms. Pearson chose a sensory room to help children with sensory issues who need a place to calm down, and Mrs. Alfield chose flexible seating for her classroom. Both of these ladies took advantage of this opportunity to purchase items for their classrooms with outside funding. I'm very proud of the effort that Ms. Pearson and Mrs. Alfield put forth for the students of General John A. Logan Intendence Center. Their attention is always on the students as they continually strive to do what is best for them. Congratulations to both Mrs. Pearson and Mrs. Alfield on a job well done, and this is from Carla. Linda's here. That's it?
Thank you.
This is from Stacy Stanton. Liz Grant received a grant from Egyptian Electric for five hundred dollars. She and Monica May will be teaching a sewing class using math skills that the students have learned in their math classes. They plan to start the class January thirtieth, and it will be during RTI. The students will be making their own pincushion, making a flag block for the Wounded Warrior quilt, designing and making their own quilt block that will be put with others to create a quilt that will be raffled off during STEM Night. And if time permits, each student will create a preemie quilt that will be donated to the NICU at Carbondale Hospital. The second one's from Timmy Caldwell. I would like to give a shout-out to Steve Bundren. He co-teaches with me at middle, at middle school during math in the morning. He realized that our dry erase boards and markers were slowly deteriorating, and took it upon himself to buy a class, uh, set of new boards, even double-sided, markers and erasers. The students love the new boards and can't wait to get them out every day. I'm very appreciative and also think it is important to recognize our teachers for their dedication to our students.
All right, I also have a couple, both dealing with the music program. The high school marching band would like to thank Mr. Grody, the administration, and school board for the funds to purchase new uniforms this year. The help, the Elks helped in purchasing new shoes, and the band was able to debut entirely new uniforms for the first time in twenty years. The band performed at, so here we go. Meet the teams, four home football games, St. Joe's Memorial Hospital, General John A. and Carruthers Elementary, Apple Festival Kitty and Grand Parade, Drums at Apple Time, American Legion for Veterans Day, Fan Appreciation Night, the playoff game at Kenkeke, Illinois. In addition, the band received the following awards this fall. At the McHenry Preview of Champions, they received Best Music, Guard, Percussion, Visual, General Effect, first place in Class Two A and Grand Champion. At the Tri-State Small Schools Championship, they received Best Guard, Music, Percussion, Visual, General Effect, first place Class Three, the Grand Champion, and Overall Grand Champion. At the Jaguar Classic, again, Best Music, Visual, Percussion, first place White Division, second place Overall and Finals. At Belleville Marching Invitational, Best Music, Visual, General Effect, Class One A. At St. Genevieve Competition, Best Music, first place Class Three A. And the band finished undefeated in class competition for the third time in the past five years. Congratulations to them. And now I have a letter from Dr. Melissa Gustafson Hines, uh, with Illinois Music Education Association, District Six. On behalf of the ILMEA, I would like to congratulate Mrs. Jessica White and the Middle School Chorus on their acceptance for performance at the Educators Association Conference. The middle school was just one of three middle school choirs chosen to perform, and that's from the entire state. Their performance will be on Saturday, January twenty-sixth at eight fifteen AM, and this is the highest honor a music educator and ensemble can receive in the state. In addition, Ms. White serves as a leader in our section of the state as the junior chorus representative. She has been exemplary in planning for the upcoming district auditions and festivals, and she has a great future in ILMEA leadership. This letter is also your invitation to attend the performance. And she would like to come here and give a formal presentation of that, um, in, in invitation. So congratulations to the school and Mrs. White for the honor.
I see some Crimson people here, know about the chorus, so congratulations to those students for your hard work. Thank you for all you did.
Probably the most honored and winning program we have, we've got in this district is Crimson. It's a great program, great.
They look great in their new uniforms.
And they didn't have to smell the old ones. Is that it?
Nope, I've got one. This is from, um, Mr. Jeff Keener. I would like to thank Jessica White, her cast, and too many other people to list on another successful MMS Drama Club production. December seventh and eighth, we retreated Mary Poppins Junior in the auditorium. The middle school plays have become a huge source of pride for our school and are truly top-of-the-line productions. Assistance from members of the community and current MHS students combined with Ms. White's leadership to provide opportunities in the arts that would not otherwise be possible. As with all of our clubs, Ms. White and her crew volunteer their time for this event, and I would want to make sure that they know their efforts are greatly appreciated.
Okay. Always good to hear great news like that. Okay, next is Freedom of Information Act request.
We did get one today. The MEA asked for the teacher time sheets, uh, from the beginning of the school year and the subpay amounts. They did ask for that previously, and I believe that we've responded today.
Yes.
So. We got the fore, and we've responded timely.
That's it?
That is it, yes.
All right, item number ten on the agenda is the recognition of the audience. The Board of Education welcomes the audience to make public or employee comments. The board has set aside time in the agenda specifically for this purpose. Pursuant to Board Policy two point two three oh, each speaker shall be limited to a five-minute presentation. Please be aware that while this is the time for the public to express its opinions and/or concerns, the board may or may not comment regarding public presentations. If a matter of public comment warrants discussion or action with the Board of Education, such discussion or action will be added to the agenda of a future meeting. Do we have any public concerns or comments? Do we have any employee concerns or comments? Yes, sir.
I have one. Cody O'Nar, Principal of Murphysboro High School. I just want to, uh, invite everyone on January seventh at six PM, we're gonna have an open house at the high school, uh, with the induction of the new auditorium and, uh, office space that, that has been built over the past two years. I also, on, on behalf of everyone at the high school, I want to say thank you to the school board that approved the project from the beginning, and, um, all the construction companies, architects that designed it, helped build it. They've been great to work with the entire time, I think Steve, Mr. Grody would agree as well. So thank you for that. Uh, I think it's gonna be something that our kids are gonna be able to benefit from for decades. On top of that, I want to talk about how proud I am of the faculty and the staff and the students at Murphysboro High School over the past two years. Um, I think I've got the chance firsthand to see how much this has affected others, uh, other than myself over the past two years. From the building vibrating and shaking for instructors, from construction workers rock music playing through the walls in your classrooms. Um, it's not been easy for teachers to keep focus. Uh, it's not been easy for students to, to, to get their work done as peacefully as they had in the past. To the students that are freshmen and sophomores that have never had an auditorium or somewhere to practice their performing arts. I'm glad that that's almost over, and I think it's gonna be a, a, a great thing for us. Um, I also want to say that out of all of the negativity of that, uh, there's also been a ton of positive. Um, I think teachers have grown closer, um, because people like Lori Elwell, our foods and, and clothing teacher, um, bringing in Jessica White and her entire choir, uh, sixty, seventy kids every morning, and letting them use her classroom while she's teaching foods next door, they're singing them there. Uh, Mr. Ben Dogan, bringing in, uh, Mr. Sutton and Mr. Murphy to teach Driver's Ed in his classroom. Mr. Tripp, bringing in, uh, Mr. Murphy as well, down in the manufacturing room to teach Driver's Ed. And not to mention those distractions, I mean, I, I've witnessed students, I mean, you got small engines over here, and there's kids that like small engines, and they're trying to listen to Driver's Ed, but there's a small engine over there. It's kind of distracting. So, so the environments have not been, uh, ideal, um, but I, I think we're almost there. I'm excited. One of the things that I'm most excited about is the safety. We're gonna be so much safer now, that we can have a policy in place where no student, uh, lets people in through any other door other than the front last doors that we can see clearly through. Um, I think that's huge in today's, uh, society, that, that, I mean, quite honestly, we haven't felt safe at many times over the past few years, and, and years before this happened, because our office was inside our school, and you had to already be inside the school to get to the front office. Times have changed since our, our building was first built. Um, so, so we appreciate that, and, and like I said, I'm very proud of what this has done, even though it's been. even though it's been tough at times, what it's done to help people grow and get closer in our building. It's rather remarkable and so we hope you can come out January 7th, 6:00 p.m. We'll start semester two in our new building. Pretty exciting.
Thank you, Mr. Almeyer. All right, moving to Old Business, first item will be the financial update. This is information alone.
Yep, this is our monthly update. Money is still coming in. Talking with Jan, there's been no comments in any of our professional organizations regarding it possibly being prorated this year or any issues with that, so that is all great news. We just received our second payment of the property taxes today. So that is also good news. Most importantly, Friday of last week, Ms. Bush took the insurance adjusters around to the auditorium and they inspected it and we did indeed at least build what we used to have. And so the final payment from the insurance will be coming to us shortly. We signed off on the fact that we did build an auditorium.
Right, I'm estimating, and it could be more, a little over $903,000. It's still coming in, yeah. So, yeah, we had to wait till they could see it, we sent them the plans, but until they could actually come and inspect. It'll hopefully be more, but I'm not counting, they're going to give us every little thing that we've discussed, so that was good news. So I said, send the fat check and send it soon.
Well, what about finances, did you want to update briefly about the insurance?
Yes, I attended, I believe it was December 5th, Egyptian Trust Health Insurance Board Meeting with Barb Helfrich and with Nikki Haggen, one of our teachers, it's on the MEA Insurance Committee. The, our health insurance, the district, we tried a new thing, I believe it was effective September 1st of 2017. And it's basically negotiate discounts, so there's not a network out there, you know, Health Link or a network. It's negotiate our own network as we go and the potential savings we thought to be really great. That has, it has not been what they thought it would be. We've still experienced savings and for us and our network with Sih, which a lot of our providers are part of that network, that's pretty good for us, but in other areas with the Egyptian Trust as a whole, it has not been very good. So there are all these bills that are outstanding that hadn't been paid. Some members, and some of our members, but many are, you know, in other school districts, bills sent to collections that weren't being taken care of by insurance because hospitals or doctors weren't agreeing to those discounts and weren't paying. So based on that, March 1st, we voted to go to Blue Cross Blue Shield for their network, their billing, just pharmacy, trust-wide, so Blue Cross will be our provider at even bigger discounts than what we're experiencing. So that should, there should be a savings to the trust as a whole. We won't know until May, May, what our rates will look like for next year and whether we're still wanting, but I went ahead and asked for our claims to see what those are going to look like in case we get to the end and have increases and we can take a look at it then. But for now, the news is that we're, they've hired someone to take care of those balance bill claims that are out there and we'll be going to Blue Cross, so we should see some, if you've heard anything about our health insurance and any staff or faculty members having issues getting claims paid, Blue Cross should take care of that and they are working really hard to get some of those older claims paid. So that's good news. I think it was, it was something that was kind of a trial run and they had hoped, but there have just been lots of problems with that, so we were glad, Nikki and Barb and I were glad to have that discussion and be able to be part of that and to maybe make some improvement moving forward.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the Board? Next item under Old Business is construction project updates. I think we kind of got one of them.
Yeah, the January 7th at 6:00 p.m. is the open house for the auditorium. We finalized in that punch list, there's still just a few issues. It was good we got rain last week. It's good to get the leaks found and the roofers out there to fix all of those leaks prior to the snow being piled on top of it. Anybody that was upset with the rain, that was a good thing.
So in essence, they're done, other than the punch list?
No, they've still got some things, I mean, they're putting up walls still and the final glass wall that's between the office and the auditorium.
So when is this, when is the actual completion date then?
Next week, probably a little bit after Christmas.
I think the 24th was the initial completion date and then they always have the punch list stuff after that.
So they're out on schedule then?
Oh, yeah.
Good.
They're going to have a few things after Christmas that they have to come in and do. They're bringing in some people to, from California to program the lighting that runs along that exterior auditorium wall.
They're still waiting for the server or something that goes on that, so there's some things that have been ordered. One of the toilets came in and it was cracked in shipment, so they have to reorder those.
We're very fortunate, usually you don't get a completion date.
Yeah, all little things and it's really nice. I'm excited about the January 7th, I think the community will be excited when they see what we've got.
I think they're going to love it when they see it.
So not just an open house, but we're going to enter on January 7th through the front.
Yeah, school starts that day, through the news.
We're going to go, students are going to come in through the front, brand new, at the new semester.
With all that rain, there was that drain right on the front, how did that, was that okay?
That is the overflow roof drain.
Okay.
And I was told that that drain's been there and I just didn't notice it until that heavy rain when the, when there was the wet spot at the concert the next day. So it should only occur when you're looking at 14th Street flooding. Water should not like kind of normal rates. It happens all the time, that's what I said to the other question.
Yeah, there's some kinds of leaves and debris piled up. Is the city doing anything about that to clear so that drainage, it looked like it anyway, when they drove through there?
With the flooding on.
The concert, yeah.
We've got a, we've got a big problem. I mean, it's to the, it's to the north of us. It's at, where the railroad crosses our property.
The beaver dams.
There's a bunch of major huge trees dammed up. That culvert that goes under the railroad, it's going to have to be addressed once it's parted out.
Is the city addressing that, is it addressing that?
That would be county.
Yeah, say that's not us, it's not city.
You said it's underneath the railroad tracks?
It's, well, it's going into the culvert that goes under the railroad tracks.
So it'd be railroad problem.
When you look at the plots, the plots right now, Darren Ripley's looking into that because the, that little river does meander onto our property and onto the other properties that we're contiguous with. And so exactly where the dam is and whose issue it is, we don't know yet.
And the beavers are actively cutting right now.
Yeah, we've contacted DNR and they need to come in and they've trapped in the beavers and getting them out of there, so.
So if those dams somehow get fixed, is that the end of the problem though?
They're so massive right now, there's no way to fix them without heavy construction equipment, like major track hoes. I mean, they're huge. Darren sent me a picture, the last time it flooded a few weeks ago, it's pretty major.
That's down by the road though, so.
I mean, down through, down along the road and through the property is pretty clear. It's way north of us, back behind the radio station where the railroad tracks, the creek goes under the railroad tracks.
I mean, kind of what I'm hearing sadly is I'm not sure what, if anything, can be done.
Stage one right now is getting DNR to come in and trap those beavers. And then, and then, and then the dam will have to be torn down and then we've got to crap and then we're going to have to make sure we don't.
Yeah, but I mean, it's getting all those agencies to actually care enough about that one spot and that's why I'm not really optimistic that's all going to be done.
They've, I don't know if they've returned the call to Darren yet.
I was going to say, will they do that because they wouldn't deal, they wouldn't deal with our turkey issue and the turkeys were assaulting students and our faculty.
It's going to be on the show there tomorrow. All right, any, any other questions from the Board on the construction projects?
I've got a couple more things.
Okay, sorry.
That's all right. Facility planning, I just want to make everybody aware that the General, if we go by dates, the middle school is now scheduled for the parent facility meeting at the building where we're going to discuss how the parents' needs of the buildings. It's going to be January 8th at 6:00 p.m. We've got the General John A. Logan, January the 17th at 6:00 p.m. The high school is actually January 10th. So the open house is on the 7th, that's Monday. The middle school facility, parent facility is on Tuesday, the 8th. Thursday, the 10th is the high schools. Then we've got, the General John A. Logan is on the 17th and Carruthers is on the 31st. Carruthers is going to be at 5:00 p.m. we're starting.
At 5?
At 5.
Now, parents are going to have a hard time getting there at 5.
Mr. Todd and I will, will discuss that, he.
I mean, this is for parents, right?
Right.
I mean, most parents work till 5 though. If they work during the day, it's eight to 5.
We are meeting happening at 6 that night, we can move it back to 7.
I'm just saying, I mean, if you want parent participation, you kind of have to work around there.
So we'll either move it to 6 or 7.
30th or 31st?
31st.
If you make the change, I think you ought to be consistent and make it 6 o'clock for all of them.
Does it have a PTO meeting on that time?
Yeah, but he said he could move that one back to 7, right? Or is that?
We tried to do all of these on the same night as the PTO meeting to try and get the PTO involved.
Good thought.
And then in February, once we get those individual, basically each one of those meetings is going to hopefully focus in on that one building and kind of the needs of that one building, what the parents think about that one building. I'm looking at February 13th at the high school in the Commons area for an all-district meeting where we kind of, I share each individual meetings, things, and then we'll have like little working groups where we try and prioritize and discuss that as a, you know, we'll have small group little discussions at their tables and then share out what, you know, they think is important and why. This is all building up to hopefully in March, having a, a plan where we look at the next four years and these are the big projects that need to be happening in those next four years, a timeline, so to speak.
The high school all-district would be at 6:00 p.m. also?
Yeah.
Now, our parents invited to, any parent can go to any of, any four of these, right?
Right.
Because even if they don't have a high school or they might at some point, okay.
But when we're doing those, those, those January meetings, I want to make sure that when we're at the general, we're talking about the general.
Right.
And then they can come to the middle school.
Carruthers one if they want to talk about Carruthers.
Exactly. And then February is where we're kind of put all of that information together and then in March at the board meeting, there'll be a presentation where we look at the, you know, the recommendations and discuss the priorities and that and whatnot. I also want to explain that in January, next month, we should have the bid specs for the athletic field area and for the HVAC at the middle school. In February, we're hoping to have the approval to go from those bids for both of those athletic field area project and the middle school HVAC projects. So those are moving along, we're getting the documents from the architects a week before the bids come to you, at least, because we need to go over all of the bid specs and make sure a lot of the details that we want are in there. We're becoming more efficient with that. But that's pretty much it for the construction updates.
Any other questions from the Board?
What about the stuff for the playground at the general in the summer? So will bids need to go out for that?
Yeah.
So it'll be anything over 25?
I believe the playground equipment. I believe the playground equipment, you can do a request for proposals because it's pretty specific and I know the PTO there's been working with one of the playground companies. The, but you're right, we're going to need to get the plans started on the drainage, so.
And is the, is the Board or the district, I'm sorry, is the district paying for the playground equipment?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so originally the PTO wanted to do the fundraising for it, but that'll just, it'll take too long, so.
Other questions? All right, moving to item three is the approval of the 2018 tax levy, which is enclosure number one. Actually, I think it was on.
Enclosure and then the handout is just a resolution that, yeah, the, the enclosure is just a certificate of tax levy that we filed with the county clerk and the attachment was the actual resolution that we also, the Board approves and we sign and all the numbers are the same as what's on the tax levy that we're required to also file with the county clerk's office. So at the November meeting, truth in taxation law requires that we establish not less than 20 days prior to the official adoption. So tonight, with that estimated amount that we need to levy, so we did that at the November meeting. The Board approved the 7.5 million, not including debt service, for all of the other funds that was approved. It was under the 5% required to have a tax levy hearing, so we did not have one. So the 4.9% and the amounts have not changed since we met in November and that is still the administration's recommendation for Board approval, is that amount for levy. And as I said, that, that didn't include the debt service, so the conversation, if the Board so chooses to abate any, the county facility sales tax in January is when we'll come back and take a look at whether that's something that the Board wants to do. We will also need a resolution to abate, and this is just procedural, to the bonds that we sold last year that we're paying for with county facility sales tax. We'll have to do a resolution to abate that entire amount, but that's just part of that process. We, you know, it was never meant to go for the taxpayer, so that would happen then in January. So we have all that paperwork ready to go for, to the county clerk for February.
All right, questions from the Board? Hearing none, then I would entertain a motion to approve the 2018 tax levy as presented. So, second?
Second.
Nancy?
Mr. Bain?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mrs. Dor?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Bieber was absent, Mr. Rungy?
Yes, motion carries. Last item under the Old Business is to approve the press policy updates.
Yeah, the recommendation is to approve the policies as presented. There was a, in my note to you, the administering medicines to students, I commented that I wanted to talk to Charlene Mallor and to our lawyers. Charlene agrees that we should not adopt the section about the asthma medications. Right now, she has some concerns with getting a doctor to prescribe it. There's not a, like with the EpiPens, the doctors can prescribe to school the EpiPens and there's a liability issue there. She says, it's a doctor, the Attorney General's Office has not produced documents limiting the liability for the physician who orders the inhalers. And so she thinks that there might be a problem getting that. She feels like the ISBE that we should just not adopt it. Regarding the lawyers, they agree that we should not be adopting the section on medicinal cannabis because of the possibilities that there will be some time when we do our federal grants and get the federal monies. Right now, we do check off that there's a drug-free workplace. At some point, they might start adding that there's no cannabis regarding your state laws, so. With those, we're not going to adopt either of those or that's the recommendations, to not adopt either of those two things on the administering of meds. Are there any other questions?
We don't have any students, right, though? And you say we don't have any students that.
Right now, they have, yeah, no. My knowledge, there are no students that have a prescription for medicinal marijuana.
Once we update this and adopt it, how do you go about, what's the procedure for making sure that all these things get in place? I mean, there's a lot of different, you know, policies. There's a short-term sub-training program, there's different curriculum, things that have to be in place. People have to pass out concussion pamphlets. I mean, how do you, how do you go about making sure all this actually gets put in place?
All of those get added to the ROE's compliance for the most part and when the ROE comes in, you have to show documentation that all this stuff's there. And so with all of these changes, you start figuring out where you're, how you're going to document it and you start collecting the information, knowing that that compliance report is going to come out. So, I mean, it really depends on, on the situation.
Like the curriculum, do the things that are under curriculum, do you make sure that the Curriculum Council is aware of all these things? And could, yes?
Yeah, so like today, we discussed the whole cursive thing and they agree that the third grade is still where they would like to see it and so the policy as written would be less than fifth grade. They have to do an introduction.
And the school day, that changed, where will that conversation happen?
That conversation's going to happen as soon as our calendar committee starts discussing it. My recommendation is I don't think that we should change our school day very much based on the new standings because I don't know how long that, I think that's going to get reversed. My recommendation is I don't think that we should change our school day very much based on the new standings, cause I don't know how long that, I think that's gonna get, um, reversed pretty quickly in the legislative season. Or at least that's what I'm hearing, is it's gonna get reversed pretty quick.
And those be running for reelection, so all the new long oaths?
Anything else?
There were some changes to that before, I'll tell you that.
Other comments, questions from the board? Then I'll entertain a motion to approve the policy updates, the press policy updates. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Moving to new business. First item is the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen senior, seniority list. Which is information that we were given a copy of.
Yep, at your spots and those be going out to the schools for the teachers and the, uh, faculty and staff to all look at and, and discuss and they will contact Nancy, should there be any changes, then we'll have an action item next month for the approval of it.
Questions?
Pending any changes.
Item number two is the property tax relief grant.
Yes, and the recommendation is that we should, um, apply for this property, property tax relief. At, uh, at, at the I A S A and at the I A S B O, they're all recommending that every school district in the state, um, adopts this or requests this. Right now, they've got fifty million dollars put aside for the property tax relief. Out of the eight hundred and, um, what do I have? Out of the eight hundred and fifty-one districts, we are the five hundred and tenth one on the list. Fifty million dollars is not going to get to us. If they were going to do the property relief per how they're doing it for all of the districts, we would need around two billion, seven million, six hundred and six thousand, seven hundred and forty-one dollars to abate all of the district's taxes, so, um.
I had a question on that. It has different schools divided into different tiers. There's like a tier one on there and a tier two on that spreadsheet.
Yeah, that's just.
What is that?
That's with the evidence-based funding, so like we're a tier one district, so all of the new money that goes into the education fund of the tier one schools get it first.
So I wondered if the tier one schools would be actually, if you, if we looked at and you did a sort for just tier one schools, then we aren't necessarily five hundred or whatever on the list.
What they're doing is they, they're, they're, they're sorting it by the, um, U E T R.
Mm-hmm.
Whatever that percentage is. So like Homewood Flossmore seventeen percent and Ziegler Royalton is one point two percent and we are three point nine 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 percent.
That was the, something that had to do with the amount of like underfunded we were over, so.
Yeah, I don't exactly.
One of the educators, what's the U E T R?
I forget what it stands for, too.
I, I don't.
But it has to do with our, uh, you know, percentage of property taxes, uh, with funding and we are so far down that list that
Yeah.
no one thinks we're going to get to that, but the, the bottom line is if you say you don't wanna apply for property tax relief and we were to get to that on the list, that just sends a bad message that we, that we don't wanna do that for our taxpayers. So, um, I don't know how many of those. I don't think we are that far down on the list. If you assorted a different way. But, but it's not, you're not eligible by your tier on, on this money, though. They don't look, they don't, the evidence-based funding is, tier one gets some money, but not, not with this. Not with the property. Not with the property tax.
I think, I think the safest thing to say is that if you sorted it a different way, you're, Mrs. Door is exactly right, if you sorted it a different way, we become a different place on the list. Now, what the state has told us is that they're doing it by the U, this U E T R and I don't know how they've calculated that.
I think you'll see more tier four schools.
But if we apply, then, um, and, and should happen to get it, great. You know, I would, I would think that that's a, a good thing. If we don't, if we do happen to get it, I'm going to be skeptical as to why we got it based on the list and someone's gonna have to explain to me why it got changed before we go into it, cause I wanna know why all these other districts aren't doing it. Right now, the way I understand it, if, if we would do this, we would get, what, one point five, uh, million dollars to abate our education fund. We would have to abate one point five seven, so seventy thousand dollars we would have to put in to abate the education fund. However, that's a one-time payment we would have to make and that one point five million gets added to your base minimum in your funding formula for every year from here on out.
Right, that's just a, and your abatement.
You know, anybody that, that does apply and get this, they're gonna, I, I would think, want to, want to get this. There are districts like Carbondale High School, looking at their numbers, they would give in the grant one point one million and they would have to abate one point four million. So I mean, it would cost them three hundred thousand and so some districts might be in a position where they say, yeah, we're not gonna do this, I'd love to, but we just can't afford it for, you know, um. So the recommendation right now is the safest course of action as we move through this is to apply.
You said you thought the tier four schools would get?
There's three tiers.
Okay.
Well, it's potentially some of those tier four schools will get money before we do because they're higher, they're higher on the list.
I just asked about tier fours.
Tier fours.
Said there's only three.
There is a tier fours.
There's a tier four.
My apologies.
Those tier four schools that are funded at
Okay, which, so give, give, give me an example of those. Who's in tier four?
Lake Forest.
Lake Forest?
Some richer school district.
Oh, very wealthy.
They, they, their, their, their property taxes bring in over a hundred and some percent of what they need.
So what they're doing is they're, they're abating the rich school districts that re, that relies more on local taxes than the state.
Yes.
That's what they're doing. They're giving the relief to them.
Right.
When you look at this way, I'm saying.
Well, that's what you mean will happen. I, we don't know that for sure.
Yeah, like Homewood Flossmore is not a, 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 I mean, they've got commercial wealth, but the population in Homewood Flossmore is not necessarily a, a, what I would consider a rich district like Lake Forest. I don't think Lake Forest is on the list. I'd have to check to see exactly where they are, but.
Well, I think all the schools were on the, on that list. When I, I went out to that website and looked, I mean, there, I think every district is on there.
All, every school's on there, yeah, somewhere.
But I understood when, if we got the grant, that one point five million, whatever our funding is, is sort of taken off the top because we're already getting that in, in the grant.
And when I had a conversation with the.
That's the way I read it.
Yeah, when I called the state and was discussing this with them, he said that's actually added into your base funding minimum and that gets added in every year from here on out. Cause at first I was like, you know, that, is that taken out of your, out of your, you know, your tiered money? Cause that would make sense. But the guy at the state was adamant that that's not the way it works, that it's additional money that will be added to the base funding minimum.
It doesn't make sense, that that, they would be able to continue that, to sustain that moving forward. That's the thing, sustaining that.
Maybe call somebody else and ask the same question and see if they can answer it.
And not parading it. But we're all skeptical of it.
But the thing is, is you can, if we, if we apply for this now and we are awarded it, we can say no. So there would be a second, second level of checking. So right now, the recommendation is to approve the application of the property tax relief grant.
Any other questions?
And the, the seventy, you know, whatever the dollar amount is, that doesn't have to go with the application grant.
No.
What's that?
The amount of money doesn't have to go with the application grant.
Seventy thousand.
No.
So this, this still, we haven't out?
Yes.
This wasn't a Zimbabwe prince that sent you an email asking for seventy thousand?
Wait, it was, actually.
Don't do it, I heard.
Sorry.
Any, any other questions? All right, then I would entertain a motion to approve the recommendation of the property tax relief grant.
Some more.
Second. Nancy, I'm gonna have you roll this.
Okay. Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mr. Bain?
Yes.
Mr. Bieber's absent. Mrs. Door?
Yes.
Mr. Rungy?
Yes, motion carries. Next item of business will be the approval of the change of the financial accounting software.
Long story short, our current financial package is becoming obsolete. They're no longer going to be supporting it. We've looked into, um, options to change that. We've made the selection. We'd like to change it over in January of two thousand twenty. So December thirty-first, two thousand nineteen to January first. We are asking for our approval of this, um, financial accounting software so we can get in the queue for that, um, changeover.
There are a lot of schools that are going to be making the jump that are S T I schools right now. Um, S D S is what we're requesting to change to. And so right now, in Southern Illinois, you're either an S T I school or you're an S D S web-based school. And there really aren't a lot of other districts doing anything else in that, which is why that was so attractive to us, that support system, the cost point. But Carbondale High School was planning to go on July first and they had to push them back because they didn't get the training and because there are so many schools. So that's why we're asking now, even though the implementation won't happen for a year, but we need to get in there and get, get trained, um, so they're not delaying us. Because the drop dead time is June thirtieth of twenty. Um, so this gives us time just in case there is a delay. They will no longer be supporting in any way this software after June thirtieth of twenty.
So the initial cost is thirty thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars?
Yes, that's a one-time and that includes, um, our financial package, which is web-based and also activity accounts for high school and middle school, so they can do those funds on our system. Um, and then the, the ongoing, including the activity accounts, would be sixty-three hundred a year. This is a three-year contract. Um, and then we would actually be hosting ourselves, which schools that don't have the capability to do that, to host in the, what, in the cloud or whatever, however we do that, um, would pay another four thousand dollars. So because we have the capability to do that, that saves us.
So where do they go?
Can they come to us and we charge them?
Yeah, exactly. That's exactly where I'm headed.
They're just hosted out on the web, right?
Not since we're, since we're not gonna be hosting other schools any longer, that won't be possible.
Anything is possible.
I'm not saying, I'm not saying, I'm saying no.
I mean, instead of them paying four thousand dollars to somebody else and we've got the capabilities, why wouldn't we investigate that?
We could definitely do that.
We could look at that.
Exactly.
Your revenue stream.
Yeah, absolutely.
Who uses S D S now in the area? Is there, like, people you've talked to?
Carbondale Elementary uses it, that's what they use. Trico uses it, Tri County uses it, Haron uses it. We have a lot of people right here that are already using that and they are doing, um, monthly or quarterly bookkeeper user groups, so they can talk about any issues that they're having. Um, so I really like that about it, that you have help almost everywhere you go. Um, there are just a couple of districts that aren't going to be doing that.
Other questions from the board? Just look like you're eager to make the motion to approve this.
No. It's funny and ironic that to keep track of money costs a lot of money.
Yes.
It does. Well, it was, yeah, our, our switch.
Oh, talk to your banker.
Our switch to our new student information system a year ago at the beginning of last year, that was very costly also when we made that initial switch, so it is.
Will there be hardware updates too that you need to do to move to that system?
Hardware updates?
No.
No, shouldn't.
There may be, if we get away from timesheets and time cards, there may be some hardware for that type of implementation, which we could do that.
We, yeah, we may look at.
But as far as servers and things like that, there would be nothing.
The only other thing might be in our bookkeeping department, maybe a scanner, desktop scanner, because there, this has a capability because it's, um, a web-based that we can house invoices, purchase orders, all the copies of paper that, and become a paperless system. So you, everything's housed on a web-based system and, and the scanner would be something that, desktop, that would save a lot of time for our bookkeeping staff.
Other questions?
So that I'm clear, we're, we're, we're recommending the purchase of this software. I, 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 was it, we're hosting it then?
We are hosting our own.
We are our own.
Our own.
He's gonna investigate whether or not we can host others as a revenue stream.
So do we have to pay for those right now, since it doesn't go, or just get in the queue that we will pay for it? How does that?
I think there will be some upfront costs now.
Until we sign the contract, they wouldn't.
Yeah, they won't even, they won't let us have any training dates or, until we actually sign. So we'll be signing, if the board approves this tonight, we'll be signing that.
Since it was over, okay. I thought I saw something.
To be able to move forward.
Maybe that was somewhere else about.
Yeah, um.
Oh, the initial will most likely occur during this year, okay.
Other questions? Then I would entertain a motion to approve the recommendation of the change of the financial accounting software. Some more. Second?
Second.
Nancy?
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mr. Bain?
Yes.
Mr. Bieber's absent. Mrs. Door?
Yes.
Mr. Rungy?
Yes, motion carries. We're getting ready to move into closed session before I accept that recommendation. To all of you students who need somebody to sign your agendas, anybody sitting at this table can sign that, plus the administrator, so.
Anybody that's already left, just out of luck.
So don't gang up on just on one person, okay? Now we have a need to go into closed session.
Motion to go into closed session pursuant to section two of the Open Meetings Act, five Illinois compiled statutes, one twenty slash two C, to review the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance and dismissal of a specific employee of the district, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodge against an employee to determine its validity.
In a second? Nancy?
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Bain?
Yes.
Mr. Bieber's absent. Mrs. Door?
Yes.
Mr. Rungy?
Yes, motion carries.